Hug.
Here.
Johnson. Melton.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the pledge and remarks by Councilmember Melton.
My pledge is to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, have a seat. Actually, you know what? For brevity, we have a lot of people here. I just saw everyone. I was just talking to Austin. We really haven't gotten any, any snow this year. So I
Don't say that.
I've talked to a number of people who do snow removal for a living, and they're all having kind of a, kind of a hard time. So if any of you have any extra yard projects that maybe you could give some of, some of the people that do yard work in the summer and plow snow in the winter, why don't you give them a call? Because I think they're all hurting a little bit. Hopefully, we will get a couple of snowstorms just to keep them employed and help them feed their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today. Look forward to your testimony on our many items. I'd encourage you to turn your cellphones off, or at least to vibrate. If you have any trouble hearing the proceedings today, you can visit with our clerk here at the end of the table for a listening device. Or there's also closed captioning on the screen in the back of the room here. Before we start our regular meeting, we do have a proclamation to be presented to the Omaha Camera Club by Councilman Rowe.
Mr. President. Whereas the Omaha Camera Club was founded by four members as a nonprofit organization on February 2nd, 1925, in order to promote the art and technique of photography. And whereas the club's current membership stands at 69 individuals who meet twice a month at the Nebraska Methodist College of Nursing, gathering to listen to educational speakers and engage in friendly competition with 37 other regional photo clubs. And whereas the talented members of the Omaha Camera Club have been invited to photograph events throughout the metro area with prints displayed in prominent areas and galleries. And whereas each year, the Omaha Camera Club holds digital contests six times a year and a print contest every April in categories including Altered Reality, Nature, Travel, and Black and White. And whereas members of the Omaha Camera Club strive to help educate each other in order to better their photographic and post-processing skills, providing an informal, friendly, and supportive experience for photographers at all levels of experience and interest. And whereas the Omaha Camera Club, through mutual fellowship and educational experiences, encourages both excellence and an appreciation of the activity of photography. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Omaha, do hereby proclaim Sunday, February 2nd, 2025, as Omaha Camera Club Day, in witness whereof, we have set our hands and caused the official seal of the City of Omaha to be affixed on this 28th day of January, 2025. I believe Mr. Russell is here to accept this proclamation.
Thank you very much. Rick Russell, 6310 South 118th Plaza. I assure you, you have not been a member since day one, although you might think I was. But I have been a member the last three years, and Camera Club is, is a very active organization. Most of that content you heard as Councilman Rowe read the proclamation. We will be celebrating formally in the fall at Hot Shops with a open house on September 12th, which all could attend. We'll have photos exhibited there. And they will be up, the photos will be up for a month. As you know, we all are photographers these days. We all have cellphones. And so if you want to learn to be a better photographer, you're welcome to come free and visit our club and join it if you like. And if you'd like to see an all-cell phone exhibit right now at Gallery 1516, although not a member, Robert Duncan has a beautiful exhibit at Gallery 1516, all taken with a cellphone. And the photos are like that big. So that's what you can do with the cellphone. So as closing, I would like to thank you all as council members and all the public officials here today and employees of the city. You're great, doing a great job. We've got an awesome city here, and let's keep it going. Thank you.
Item six, to consider a Class C liquor license for Barley Boys Brewery located at 8410 K Street, Suite 6.
Is today. Proponents, please. Your name and address.
Kristy White at 8410 K Street, Number 6.
Jason Nassar, 8410 K, uh, K Street, Number 6.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Hug, you're recognized.
Good afternoon. I just want to make a motion to approve.
Okay. There's a motion to approve in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I was standing up.
Item seven, to consider a Class C liquor license for Little India Restaurant and Bar located at 3562 Farnham Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Joshi Anthony, Taste of India, Little India DBA, at 3562 Farnham Street, 68131, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll do a motion to approve. And welcome to Blackstone. I, I wish you the best up there. It's gonna, it's a great growing community there, and I know you'll do well there. So welcome to Blackstone, and I'll make a motion to support. Thanks, Mr. President. Thank you.
Motion in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item eight, to consider a Class C KG liquor license for Rathgiller Beer House located at 4524 Farnham Street.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Zach Patrick. I'm at 4524 Farnham Street.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Good to meet you in person.
You as well, sir.
Good talking to you last week. You and I had a nice chat. You're, you're opening in the place where Chad's client owned before. So is it gonna change, or is it the same? Remember, we talked about this. So tell us what it's gonna be like.
It's gonna be pretty identical to what it was before. Changed up the menu a little bit. Went more authentic German food. We're playing with a little bit of schnitzel, a little bit of spitzel. We're still gonna have a lot of German festivals. Our newest one coming up in March will be Bach Fest. I'm actually bringing my goats from home to kind of play around with that. So that'll be a good time. So we're just planning on really getting involved in the community. I want to do a king or queen of Oktoberfest within the community of Blackstone or Dundee. Just really looking forward to the opportunity.
And you and I talked about the, the food menu. So you said you're still gonna have the brats, and you're gonna have rubens and your famous pretzels?
Yep. So we just participated in Blackstone's Reuben competition this last week. Still gonna have pretzels, a variety of brats, including one that's a Reuben brat from West Point, Nebraska, locally sourced. Otherwise, we're, we're also got a traditional German cheese dip called a beitza, served with a rye bread. It's absolutely delicious. And then we're also got a, a couple different German desserts, crypt cakes and chocolate cake and stuff like that. So yeah.
So I know with, when Chad's owned it, there were some tough times because Saddle Creek and Farnham were closed there. But now it's open. Catalyst is about done to the south of there. So I, I know he did a lot of investment, and that's a beautiful location from when it was Cheers way back in the 80s to where it's, where it's at today.
Yeah.
So I'm glad you're keeping the same theme, and I, I know you're gonna do well, and I'll look forward to getting there for a brat and a cold one. What are your hours gonna be for your business?
Yeah, so we're gonna be closed on Mondays. And then Tuesday through Thursday, 11 to 10. Friday and Saturday, 11 to midnight. And then Sunday as well, 11 to 10.
Okay. Thanks again. It was good talking to you on Thursday, and I'll look forward to seeing you down there. And I'll make a motion to support this today, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thanks, Zach.
There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item nine, to consider a Class C liquor license for Loveland Nails and Spa located at 8900 West Center Road, Suite 102.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, gentlemen and madam. I am Stanley. We own the Centall FC at 8900 West Center Court. And after 18 years in building, we love our customer. We want to get a better to serve our customer, and we want to welcome them as a friend and a family. Not like offer them a couple of dollars or anything. I don't feel like I, we need to do that. We want to offer them a glass of wine. And we try to, we love Omaha and we love America. I'm here for 25 years, and nothing compares about. Everything good.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Any other proponents for number nine? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Danny, are you up there? Go ahead. So besides, I know this is for the Loveland Nails, but he's also one heck of a tailor. And I'm, I'm wondering, no, not, yeah, you need to ask Sam to fix the back of your coat. I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion in a second to approve. No further lights. Roll call.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks. Good luck.
Thank you.
Item 10, to consider a Class D liquor license for Florence Mexican Market located at 8607-8611 North 30th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Hello. My name is Anna Rodriguez. We're with Florence Mexican Market located at 8607 North 30th Street. And we just recently applied for the liquor license to see if we're able to sell liquor. It's a small convenience store.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. This is in my district in Florence, where I was just last night with the North Omaha Commercial Club.
Yeah.
So I'm familiar with your business there. And this would just add off-sale beer, wine, and liquor, right?
That is correct. It's all packaged. Yes.
Great. Thank you. I'd be supportive of that. There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks. Good luck.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consented consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
There's been a request to remove item number 14 from the consent agenda. So that is removed. So the public hearings on agenda items 11 through 13 and 15 through 17 were held on January 14th. I don't see any further lights on those items. Is there a motion? There's a motion in a second to approve those items. Roll call.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 14 is an ordinance to approve a major amendment to the Maple Valley Mixed Use District Development Agreement to allow kennel as a permitted use at 16510 Bedford Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend denial.
The public hearing on number 14 was already held. I see Ms. Melton has her light on. You are recognized.
Thank you. I, I just want to note that the Planning Board, Planning Department, recommended denial because this is not an accepted use currently in a mixed-use area according to our master plan. I know that there have been some, basically, we call them doggy daycares that have been passed and have been open in some areas of our city who have received waivers from the Zoning Board of Appeals. And just one had received kind of an exception by this council to remain open because the business had been open for 17 years. And our vote not to allow that would have closed a business, a good business owner whose neighbors had no problem. What I believe we need to do is look at some of the definitions and separate kennels from maybe the doggy daycares. Back when our original master plan was formed, all we really had was what we would consider kennels, kind of the doggy daycare type of business. It probably has come around just in the last 15 to 20 years. And I have talked to Mr. Fanslow about that while we're considering that. And I think there even may be some changes to our ordinance that will maybe expand some of the definitions or expand some of the areas where we would allow certain dog daycares or groomers that may be separate from kennels. Right now, we don't have that in play. And we don't have those ordinances. We need to make those changes before we can approve any new businesses. And I'm still not sure that we may all agree that these should be in these types of mixed-use developments. But that's the conversation that I think we should have. That's why we formed the committee to discuss changes of the master plan. And I would like some of these things to go through our Planning Department, our Planning Board, and the Master Plan Committee before we start just kind of picking winners and losers, because I don't, I don't really think that that's fair. So that, that is why I'm supporting this denial. I support the business. I support the business plan. And I even think the business owner that was approving it has a fabulous idea. We just can't allow it to be anywhere pursuant to our current master plan. So that, that's the reason I deny it. And I look forward to working with our Planning Department on talking about the changes we can make and changing some of the definitions to accommodate maybe more of these doggy daycares in different areas that it doesn't have to be. Right now, it's very, very limited, I think. Is that correct, Mr. Fanslow?
I would say it's limited, but for good reason. So yeah, we need to take a look at it.
But I think expanding it to some areas might make sense. Again, it's something that I think we need to discuss a little more.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, Planning Board passed some code changes that'll be coming in council's way mid-March that allows kennels in other areas that they are currently not allowed.
That's correct. But it does not allow it in this area for this particular place, is my understanding.
That is not the proposed zoning code change.
Right, right. So even if we were to approve that, that wouldn't have affected this location.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Harding. There's a motion to deny in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 18 through 40 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name and address and who you represent. If you are a proponent or an opponent, these are items 18 through 40.
Good afternoon, Council of Omaha, Nebraska, and Mr. Hug. Donnie R. Johnson of Johnson and Question Foundation. I was told that you folks can inform me that this book here in London is selling for $7 million.
Donnie, that's not, that's off-topic. We're not talking about a book.
This is not, this is not selling for $7 mil-
No.
Oh, sorry.
Any other speakers on these items, 18 through 40? Seeing none, public hearings are closed. There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 41, a resolution to approve a reimbursement for facility relocation expenses to OPBD for the 205th Street and Cumberland Drive project.
Public hearing and vote on number 41 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson. Motion to approve item 41? Is that a yes or no? Okay. Thanks. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Bagley Abstains. Item 42, a resolution to approve the appointment of Chris Rupert to the Planning Board.
The public hearing and vote on number 42 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Mr. President, this question is for Director Fanslow. This position or this item before us to sign, to serve a five-year term is, where is the vacancy? Is this a vacancy due to Ms. Franklin stepping down?
Hey, Fanslow City Planning, this particular vacancy is the result of Mr. Rosenbaum stepped down after 15 years of serving on the board just last month. So this position would fill his old position.
So have we filled Ms. Franklin's position?
We did. Back in August.
As I've stated before, in order for me to do due diligence, it is very important for me to have the opportunity to be transparent for communities in Omaha, Nebraska to be able to see the individual and have the opportunity to ask questions in front of this council. This individual is not present. They were given or extended an invitation to come. Unfortunately, they were unable to come, and that leaves me at a position of not being able to apply due diligence. So therefore, I will not be able to support this.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Mr. President, yeah. I, I talked to Chris last week. She did have an out-of-town commitment that is keeping her from here. But I think she offered up to each and every one of us through an email, an opportunity. She gave times and dates when she was available to take calls, to answer any questions. So I actually talked to her before she offered up that, before she offered that up. But she's incredibly talented, works for a great architectural company here in Omaha, and would be completely additive to this board. So I'll wholly support Chris's nomination. I'll make that motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one. One public hearing can be held for items 43 through 45. Items 43 and 44 are ordinances vacating Burt Street as described on the agenda for baseball and softball fields. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 45 is an ordinance to approve a right-of-way vacation agreement with Creighton University.
The public hearings on items 43, 44, and 45 are today. Proponents, please.
Derek Scott, Creighton University, 1006 North 20th Street, Omaha, 68102. Here to speak in support of these projects. It's, we've been talking about this, and we, we met with the Planning Board, got support on this, working with Public Works and the Department of Planning to make sure that we were meeting all the requirements for stormwater diversion, all the utilities that go through the area. But our goal is to put a, to move our softball and baseball fields out of the center of campus, put a five-acre central quadrangle in the middle of campus, and then bring our softball complex and, and baseball field, practice field, intramural field combo, and then the CWS practice field out to that Burt Street, Coming Street frontage. So that's what this, this goal of, of getting these streets vacated does. Helps round out that athletic complex.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other proponents today?
Julie Prescott Burgess. I reside at 1709 Coming, and my family owns the property from 1709 to 1721 Coming. And I'm glad to see you here today. Missed you. As I've come today as a promise to Creighton University, Father Hendrickson, and this wonderful man sitting behind me. For a number of years, we have felt the heavy hand of people in our neighborhood kind of changing the neighborhood and trying to push us out of the neighborhood, including presenting documents to this body that showed that we did not even exist anymore. We've been fighting that for about six or seven years now. So I just celebrated my seventh Christmas at 1709 Coming Street. And my family is just marked 90 years of business at 1713. And for the first time in a long time, we feel like we've got another 90 years ahead of us in that spot. We are speaking in, as proponents of this because we feel like the folks up at Creighton listen to our pleas for survival. Derek has been very good about coming over and keeping us in the loop about what's going on. We recently signed an easement agreement with the university for this to happen, based on promises to us that access to our home and our business along the alley that's being vacated between 17th and 18th Street will still be open for delivery trucks and for our own, you know, able, ability to get in and out of our house, because that's where our driveway is, is on that alley. We're grateful that they've also had those conversations with the one remaining non-Creighton neighbor we have down there, which is Grace Tabernacle Church of God in Christ at the corner of 18th and Coming, a very historic church building and a wonderful, small congregation. They share our parking lot on Sundays and Wednesday nights. And we're grateful that those voices were also heard. So I'm just standing here to say thank you to Creighton and as a proponent that this go forward. We're looking forward to having baseball in our backyard. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Donnie R. Johnson, excuse me. The Johnson and Question Foundation and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Creighton for giving my son a education and allowing me to study with Andrew Young, the ambassador at the Creighton University. Thank you.
Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Hug, you're recognized.
Julie, would you come back up, please?
That might be a mistake.
Oh, I don't think so. I could personally attest that you guys are in business.
Thank you.
But I, I don't think you stated your business name.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm happy to give it a plug.
Automatic Printing Company.
I'm sorry?
Automatic Printing Company.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley?
Thanks, Mr. President. Ms. Burgess, you don't have to get up again, but I wanted to say thanks for coming down and thanks to Creighton University as well for recognizing growth and change and the great footprint that Creighton University has had in our community for decades, and recognizing Ms. Burgess and the longstanding work you do as a print shop in your livelihoods. And I think it's a great testament to Creighton University and your business on how you work through things and you can both coexist with the great growth, so thanks again for coming down and thanks again to Father Hendrickson. I know I had a nice meeting with him, as most of us did, when he laid out the plans for that, and part of it was talking in regards to Ms. Burgess and their business, so I'm glad that Creighton met that obligation and going forward that everybody's supportive of this, including myself today. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Just a question for the Creighton representative too. So I know construction is underway, and if these are approved next week, what's your timeline for the actual fields being ready and open?
Well, we're gonna, after CWS of this year, practice is done, the existing field will be demolished. And we have to have a field practicable by CWS of twenty-six. So we will start in April with some more demolition, maybe our yellow building that's still down there, and then site work and completing sometime in May of twenty twenty-six. So I don't have much hair to lose, but there's not a lot of time to get it all done.
So I'm out there working, even when it was super cold last week, so.
They are. They're rocking and rolling. Great contractors out there.
Good, thanks. I agree. It'll be a great addition and look forward to supporting it next week as well. No further lights. Next item.
Item forty-six, an ordinance to approve a professional services agreement with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc. to provide professional design services on CSO real-time controls, Mini Lusa relief sewer division modifications, and CSO one oh five Outfall active controls projects.
Public hearing on number forty-six is today. Proponents?
Jim Tyler, City of Omaha Public Works. I previously, previously provided briefings to all the council members on this project, and I'm just here to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you. Other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item forty-seven, an ordinance to accept the bid of Alexander Lawn and Landscape in the total amount of twenty-two thousand six hundred thirty-six dollars to complete the grounds maintenance for Bryan Park located at five zero zero one South Hundred and Forty-seventh Street.
Public hearing on number forty-seven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Why is this on our agenda when it's below fifty thousand?
Matt Kuzi Law Department. It is because it is for multiple years.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
Item forty-eight, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Hausmann Construction, Inc. for the construction of the Levi Carter Park Activity and Sports Complex.
Public hearing on number forty-eight is today. Proponents, please.
Mike Eastman, City of Omaha Public Works, Facilities Management. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Jake Linder, Parks and Recreation, eighteen nineteen Farnham. Just here to answer any questions.
Good afternoon. Dan Kearns with the Shimmer Associates, ten forty-four North Hundred and Fifteenth Street. Here to answer any questions as well.
Good afternoon. Dan Ritter, Hausmann Construction, one one six two seven Virginia Plaza. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? I don't see any lights. Next item.
Item forty-nine, an ordinance to approve a lease agreement with Project Harmony
for the use of premises at one one nine four nine Q Street by the Omaha Police Department.
Public hearing on number forty-nine is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item fifty, an ordinance to accept unauthorized disbursement from the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program in the amount of three hundred and eighty-five thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars.
Public hearing on number fifty is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. I'm not necessarily completely opposed to this, but from the standpoint of this looks like it reads exactly the same as the proposal in the Douglas County Board this morning. So it raises a question for me that, are we double-dipping? It also raises a question for me, well, oh, are we turning our Douglas County Police and Corrections Department, as well as the Omaha Police Department, over to the federal government? Because we'll be beholden to them for giving us the money. Perhaps we ought to cut some other programs that take money out of the city and county funds for do-good stuff, which is maybe necessary, but to provide the funds directly to the county sheriffs and the police department. Over the years, I've been, quite a few city council meetings and things, school board meetings, and it's apparent that if they are assigned as a school resource officer, for example, on a school property, they have to do the bidding on the school superintendent. And I suspect that's the same way if Douglas County Sheriff's Officer is assigned to a specific public property area, that they're beholden to do the policy of whatever that entity is. The Constitution and the founding fathers set up a system for county governments responsible for the law enforcement or legal things that are not in the Constitution, relegated to the states, and when they said the states, they meant people. They were very specific. If they meant relegated only to the legislature, they would have said relegated to only the state legislature. So they meant your government will be ruled by a county board, a county government, and they are responsible to the citizen, to no one else. But with these grants all the way from Washington, DC, what you're doing is giving up our sovereignty. That means our sovereignty, we the people. You're taking it away from us. Please reconsider. Thank you.
Any other opponents to number fifty?
Luis Jimenez, twenty-seven oh nine Dewey Avenue. Number five. Before continuing, could we hear from the authority tasked with ensuring public comments are heard as presented without interpretation or alteration? I'd like clarity on how this is handled.
I'm not sure what you're asking, Luis. Now is your opportunity to comment on this item, if you'd like to comment on it.
Well, thank you for allowing me to proceed. With my comments, however, I'd still like clarification from the authority responsible for procedural fairness. Are public comments to be interpreted by the chair or simply entered into the record as stated?
It's your opportunity to comment on this in a public forum. This is your opportunity now. You can take it or not take it.
I am asking the clerk, evidently.
Madam Clerk, feel free to respond.
Sure, comments must pertain to the item and will be made part of the record.
Thank you. So I honestly, I thought you were gonna escort me out. No, I'm joking. I want to let you know that Mr. Trump froze all grants and contracts. So I want to know if that's the case, how is South Omaha going to benefit from this allotment since the feds won't honor the financial allotment?
Okay, thank you. Any other opponents to number fifty?
I'd like to complain about something here.
No, you cannot. You've already spoken, Larry. Please sit down. You are out of order now, so please sit down. No. I see no other opponents to this item. The public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify, there's no double-dipping. This is a joint grant application between the city and the county. Therefore, the city gets some of the funding under the three hundred and eighty-five thousand, the county gets some of the funding. We split it. This is for public safety. The majority of this money is going to law enforcement, county attorney prosecutors, and even with the temporary hold from the current administration, I believe it was already stated that public safety grants were not going to be affected, so I'm not worried about this. I'm not worried about any of other public safety grants, as I think that's a priority and has been a priority. I'd like people to know that this, this grant has been provided throughout both Republican and Democrat administrations for probably approximately twenty years. And we do a lot of good work with it, especially in support of the public safety, which I know is one of this administration's number-one goal, so I'm not afraid that this will be affected at all, and I also think what we need to do is continue to approve any of the federal grants that we have already been awarded by the federal government and move forward, especially in light of the fact that public safety is one of, one of their priorities and has been exempted. So, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that that's why it was before the county board this morning and our board this afternoon. It's a joint application. It's the same grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Steve, if you don't mind coming up front, please.
Steve Servini, Deputy Chief, Omaha Police Department.
Thank you. Steve, this grant is similar to the one that we had last city council meeting, so quite naturally, we still have the same questions, so if you would please summarize those questions in the format of who, what, where, when, and why for purposes of understanding, for purposes of benefits, for purpose of knowledge.
Sure, I'd be happy to do so. Thank you, Councilwoman. This would be the exact, the exact same grant that we did talk about. It is a joint, is a joint program with Douglas County. As Councilwoman Melton said, we would get approximately a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars of the three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to be put toward real valuable programs and equipment that the operational budget doesn't cover. And those, those are a wide range of items, the equipment and the programs, all relating to public safety. Some of those things will go toward investigative equipment for our forensic unit. Our certifications, so training, different types of investigative training. The new bloodhound program that we have, it's gonna purchase a canine. A number of community outreach events and activities that officers will be able to attend, and also help fund some of those activities as well. It's really valuable spending toward our behavioral health unit, where our coresponders, which are mental, licensed mental health professionals pair up with an officer, and they go out and they interact with individuals that are going through behavioral, behavioral health crises, and they have a tremendous positive effect on reducing that workload, but more importantly, helping those individuals, providing the resources they need and making great strides toward addressing those issues, so there are just a number of activities and equipment that this funding helps us to purchase. And as you said, it is something that we've done for nearly twenty years, if not twenty years. And so it's, it is overseen by our grant coordinator. We work hand-in-hand with the mayor's office, the grant unit there, and we have a grant coordinator who oversees this, and that person works with every single item that is applied for, and it's all itemized and listed out in the grant application. We have someone assigned to that particular spending portion. So for our bloodhound training and certification, the individual who oversees and is the dog handler oversees that spending, and we have quarterly meetings regarding these grants, and all those individuals responsible for that, each itemized spending amount, show up, and they talk about the spending that has occurred, which is assigned for specific reasons. If it hasn't yet, when it will be spent, and how the program is going, so very well-run program, and it is very beneficial for us to, you know, to purchase additional things that are real valuable resources for the police department.
And so as it has been said so eloquently put, that this is something that has been going on for twenty-plus years. Having said that, and I'm a community person, and I wanted to research the data in terms of how this stacks up, what it looks like, what are the outcomes? Where would I find that at?
Well, I can certainly share the documentation and the evaluation reports for the grant with you.
Okay.
And that would be, that would be the best source.
Okay.
It's difficult to quantify the impact and the measures that this money has because it's, it's a tremendous amount. I mean, it touches so many individuals throughout the city in so many different ways. The investigative equipment helps with solve violent crimes, which helps bring peace and closure to many, many loved ones. You know, we certainly have our clearance rates, but yeah, we do keep regular reporting on all these grants, and I can certainly share those reports with you, and that somewhat gives you an idea of the effect, the positive benefits that these grand dollars have.
I would appreciate it if you would share that with me so that I can articulate that to members in the community that are coming and asking questions.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Hug? Nope. Mr. Hug?
Thank you, Mr. President. Steve, you kind of answered, you did answer my question, but I'm gonna ask in a different way. So there's no discretionary funds in this. This is not a windfall. Everything was line item, when it was applied for, specific amounts, specific uses.
Absolutely, yes. There are prerequisites and requirements for each grant, and we have to fall within those guidelines. So we carefully review, discuss, strategize, and craft that application to fit the specific grant. It has to be within those guidelines, so it's very intentional. And it's reviewed and prepared by leadership in the department long, like I said, with the grant unit officials that help us immensely prepare all that documentation.
And the funds, the funds allocated within this grant for mental health programs will augmentate the existing funds for mental health within the department?
They do. They allow us, they allow us to participate or conduct these programs which would not have been normally funded, so there were no budget dollars for what this is providing for, if that answers your question. So yes, we do have our behavioral health unit. We fund it, and these, these dollars allow us to do more with the unit that we wouldn't be able to financially afford.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. President, I have a constituent that is wanting to ask a question, and I heard Mr. Kuzi with some hesitancy regarding this person coming up front to talk. Can we explain why that would be?
That would be out of order to approach the body like that, but certainly a council member can call up someone they would like to hear from at this point, since the public hearing has already passed.
Okay, thank you. And so if Larry, because I believe in freedom of speech, we can listen to what you have to say. And Larry, could you please be very user-friendly by limiting your time to two minutes, please?
I'm not quite sure I heard you.
Can you be user-friendly by limiting your time to two minutes, please?
I'll be very quick.
Okay, thank you.
I pay taxes here. I like to be assured that this money goes directly to the sheriff or directly to the police chief, not to the organizations that run programs. This is not worded purely for public safety, Ms. Melton. So I'd like a better definition of exactly who gets the money. We have heard in these chambers efforts to take money away from sheriffs, take money away from police, and put it into programs, so we the people don't necessarily trust what we read here. Line for line items, okay, but we want to know who gets the money. We also want to know that you're not taking money away from the sheriff or from police chief to help these programs. We want to know what the programs are and who the money goes to specifically. I should not have to call an auditor in to find out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Steve, So Steve, you kind of pretty much, did you, in your summary of my question, you kind of, I'm going to assume that there are multiple providers or multiple individuals that will be receiving payments as a result of this grant?
Yes, certainly within our department. It covers many different units within our department. And the application is really public information. And it does show all those items that are listed that we apply for. And essentially, we are reimbursed, so we would pay it through the normal means of payment that the city does. And then that money comes, is reimbursed. Usually, I think it's quarterly, but not necessarily. It's reimbursed for the funding that we put forth. And I, you know, City Finance could talk about that certainly a lot better than I could. But yes, we are reimbursed after we spend that money.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Ms. Melton.
Yeah, I just want to note, actually, attached to this is 56 pages and it actually details every single dollar in which department it goes to. I mean, all the way down to, there was a $50 expenditure for OPD and it was, had to deal with the FBI, LIDA, conducting internal affairs investigation. And I think it was like a certification course, so some kind of combination with the FBI and OPD. So I mean, all the way down to a $50 expenditure and it goes directly to OPD. It goes directly to the county sheriff. I know one of these is the county attorney. It goes right directly to the county attorney's budget. And it's page by page and item by item and literally dollar for dollar. And it's all attached to this agenda item that you can find on the City Clerk's website at the City of Omaha. So cityclerk.cityofomaha.org. And this is agenda item number 50. And if you click right on the C attached, for anybody listening, all 56 pages come up and you don't need to hire a forensic accountant. You can actually look at every dollar and it's got columns. So it says exactly what it was spent for, not just Omaha Police Department, literally exactly what Omaha Police Department spent it for, just as an example. So it's all right there if anybody is interested in reviewing it. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further lights. Next item.
Item 51, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the Nebraska Medical Center and the amount is $75,992.21 and to authorize funding from the City of Omaha's fiscal year 2022. Burn discretionary community project grant award.
Public hearing on number 51 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 52, an ordinance to approve the transfer of $25,929 in the 2025 budget from the wage adjustment account to city departments.
Public hearing on number 52 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 53, an ordinance to amend section 22-77 of the Omaha Municipal Code to amend the deferred retirement option program.
Public hearing on number 53 is today. Proponents, please.
Bernard Inambash, Deputy City Attorney, not so much as a proponent, but frankly, to explain what is before you more than that. The drop, which is the Deferred Retirement Option Program, is a program that was negotiated first by the Omaha Police Officers Association in 2010 by the Omaha Fire, local Omaha Firefighters Association, Local 385 in 2013. And it provided a mechanism for employees who had met certain eligibility criteria, I think 25 years of service with the city, to enter into an irrevocable three-to-five-year entry into the program. And during that period of time, their pension is calculated prior to entry into the drop. And during the time period that one is in drop, your pension accumulates in the existing pension system with an understanding that once you complete your drop program, you'll receive the accumulated contributions. In the meantime, you continue to work as an employee for the City of Omaha. And it was intended to address situations where employees had reached the retirement benefits that they could maximize in the system and were leaving the city and going, providing service to other entities. And this was a mechanism to help address that. Something that was subject to negotiation in all four public safety bargaining groups. And as this council knows, each of those groups has different terms and conditions of employment. This particular item that's before you concerns members of police and fire management, specifically the police and fire chief. There was a concern expressed that the police chief would be ending his drop next year and that there may be potential candidates and that would want him to continue to serve and/or he may want to serve. So the mechanism that you see before you is a mechanism that was prepared to attempt to address that. We did investigate the legality of it and prepared something that we believe will be consistent with what the Internal Revenue Service will provide. The document itself provides that if police chief or fire chief who is participating in the drop and is within the 16, between six and 18 months prior to completing their drop, they can ask the mayor for permission to continue to serve in that capacity. So unlike the normal drop, which everybody can go in as a matter of right, this particular program is only available to those who request and are approved for service. And if they are approved, then that person can agree to an additional three-to-five-year election into the drop. We'll call it the second drop. When you're in your second drop, the same conditions apply. The pension actually was determined at the time that you entered drop the first time. So it's potential that your pension calculation could have occurred eight to 10 years prior to the time that you actually retired. The pension payments continue to maintain in the pension system. The employee in the city continue to make pension payments throughout the period of the drop. That's important because they're not accruing any pension service credits during that period of time. And that's what makes the drop program and this particular thing cost beneficial, frankly, to the pension system, not just neutral. And at the end of the time period, obviously, you would receive your accumulated contribution. So this was intended to address that particular concern. It applies to both the police and the fire chiefs. And again, only applies if there's approval from the mayor, whatever mayor, to have them extend their drop and they want to do it. Nothing mandatory about it. So I just wanted to provide a brief description. And then obviously, there'll be other proponents and/or opponents that can address it. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Members of Omaha City Council, Thomas Warren, Chief of Staff, Mayor's Office. I'm here on behalf of Mayor Gene Stottherd. I'm here to testify as a proponent for the ordinance to extend the Deferred Retirement Option Program, or commonly referred to as the drop program, for the Omaha Police Chief as well as the Omaha Fire Chief. And as has been mentioned, this ordinance would only apply to those individuals at the rank of chief. I'll try not to be too overly redundant, but currently, public safety personnel reach their full retirement eligibility at 25 years of service. The drop program was implemented to provide an incentive for senior-level employees to retain their employment beyond 25 years of service or for up to five years. After five years, the employee is required to retire. We have a situation with Omaha Police Chief Todd Smoderer, who will reach 30 years of service in 2026. Chief Smoderer has indicated that he would like to stay employed by the City of Omaha beyond 30 years. Omaha Fire Chief Kathy Bossman has 25 years of service. She did not, she decided not to enter the drop program yet as she did not want her five-year clock to start. And I would tell you, and I don't think that her predecessor would mind me sharing, that he was not ready to retire when he reached the five-year mark. As has been mentioned, the benefit to the city is somewhat cost-neutral. But it would also allow us to be able to retain two very competent and extremely talented executives in the highly competitive job market of public safety. They would both be highly sought after by other cities. However, they have both indicated that they would prefer staying employed by the City of Omaha. The facts are, is that if either were to retire today, they would both be eligible for a full pension. The city would have to hire a police chief and a fire chief and neither would have the experience of our current chiefs. The drop program does provide incentives for employees to stay beyond the 25 years of service. And it is a financial incentive because it allows them to collect their pension, which is deposited into an investment account. And as has been mentioned, the extension would allow them to stay between three and five years. Being a chief executive officer in a police department or a fire department is a very demanding job. Councilman Festerson, you're at the State of North Omaha on Saturday. You heard the data regarding the reports of our reduction in our crime rate. The Omaha Police Department and Omaha Fire Department represent 2/3 of our general fund operating budget and 2/3 of all city employees. The city would benefit by being able to retain these executives and maintain the continuity of leadership that they have provided in their respective departments. They have managed their departments admirably. We're asking for your favorable consideration. And I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Other proponents today?
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I support this because evidently it does not require the chief or the fire chief, or police chief and the fire chief, to have an active role in providing the services so that they can stay at a, you know, desk job. And I think a lot of us want to advance. And then when we advance, to gain a lot of benefits, moneyed benefits. But I don't know the details. I don't think that we need to be limiting people's positions in a productive role. If that doesn't do that, I support it. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, my name is Trevor Towey. I'm the president of Omaha Professional Firefighters, 6005 Grover Street. Thanks for the opportunity to speak in opposition of this ordinance. I just want to be very clear. I'm not opposed to the drop program. I'm necessarily not opposed to extending that. But I am opposed to this ordinance based on really one premise and its fairness. Police and fire retirement system has 1,500, 1,600 roughly members to it. But this ordinance only extends the benefit to two members that are also in that system. And those two members only benefit then also if the executive branch of the city agrees to it. And it disregards the other 1,500, 1,600 members altogether. I just don't think that that's fair. I believe this ordinance should be amended to include all other bargaining groups that participate in that retirement system. And listen, I appreciate the desire to maintain valuable employees. I do, and I've done it myself. Example of that is I recently had a member that entered into the drop about a year ago. And by all accounts, most everyone would agree, this member is a good employee and a great firefighter. He called me about four months ago and said, Trevor, I'm just, I don't think I'll be ready to retire at the end of my drop. I like doing the job so much. I got more to give. Is there any way we can reset the clock? I'll just go back to normal status and maybe I'll enter the drop in two years, maybe three years. I don't know. I said, I don't know, but I'll find out. And I did some investigating and what I found out was the answer is no. And the reason the answer was no is because his decision was irrevocable. His decision was irrevocable. Everybody that's entered the drop to this point has been irrevocable. And so at the end of his five-year term of his drop, his employment will terminate. Now, that's not the best result for him because he feels like he has more to give, but it's fair. And it's what rules were established. I believe this ordinance should be in the same line of that. If it's good for one person or two people, then it should be good for everybody that belongs to that retirement system. It's only the fair way to do that and that is the reason for my opposition to this ordinance. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents?
Good afternoon, Council, Omaha, Nebraska. And good luck, Ms. Melton, on your new reelection and Mr. Clerk. Anyway, Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation. As a senior citizen, we're having problem with our revenue and our retirement fund. So that's why I wanted to ask you, Mr. President, as a scholar, if I sell this book for $7 million, will I get in trouble?
All right, Donnie. We're not talking about the book.
Thank you, sir.
Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Warren, I have a few questions for you, please.
Thomas Warren, Mayor's Office.
Thank you. Chief, I have the following question. I'm concerned about succession plans, like any organization would be concerned about succession plan. I'm curious as to, does the police department as well as the fire department have succession plans?
I can't speak specifically to succession plans for the police department or the fire department. I would tell you, obviously, we're a civil service and a civil service environment. You have executive-level employees, management-level employees in both the police department and the fire department that would be eligible and qualified to ascend into those executive-level positions. After a competitive examination process, those preferred candidates would emerge and upon interviews and other evaluations, a determination would be made by the mayor as to who to select for the chief executive position in both police and fire.
And lastly, my professional background has afforded me the opportunity to have over 25 years of experience in human relations. And so my next question is centered around the backup of or to reinforce the speaker prior to you coming for Mr. Towey, Trevor, with his concern about other people being able to have the same opportunity. I understand that the program is outlined to allow those to apply and then it is approved. Is that correct?
Yes.
So then what steps would I, as an employee? What steps would I need to take in order to make that application complete? What criteria, what, yeah, what criteria would I need to possess in order to be successful in the award of a successful application?
So I'll say that in this instance, the only two individuals that are eligible would be the police chief and the fire chief. Obviously, they would have to be approved by the mayor. And in this instance, we feel very confident in the job performance of both Chief Smoderer and Chief Bossman. We feel that they have been extremely competent. They have done an outstanding job and then based on their job performance, they would be given consideration. They'd simply fill out the They'd simply fill out the application and the form to be eligible to participate in the drop program, and it would be subject to approval by the mayor. But if I could speak to the concerns that were raised by Mr. Towey with respect to rank and file. The drop program was implemented as a result of collective bargaining negotiations. And so if it was to be considered for all rank and file, both in the police and the fire department, the appropriate point to have this conversation would be during collective bargaining negotiations. This is a unique situation in that we have both the fire chief and the police chief eligible to extend their service to this community beyond 25 years, and in this instance, Chiefs' moderator beyond 30 years. I'll also mention that there was an extensive actuarial study done to determine whether or not it would have an adverse impact on our pension program if we allowed both Chiefs' moderator and Chief Bossman to participate. However, in order to conduct an actuarial study on entire rank and file, that is what would have to occur in order to assess and to determine the potential financial impact on the plan. And so in this instance, it was determined by just allowing those two individuals to participate and extending the drop period, it would actually lower the cost to the plan. And so before we could consider offering this benefit to rank and file, we would have to have a complete actuarial study on the potential financial impact, and it would have to be subject to collective bargaining negotiations.
Is that something that the city of Omaha would consider?
Potentially. And again, the appropriate, the appropriate point in time would be during collective bargaining
Okay. And that's, I guess that would be documented knowledge in terms of that process you just described in terms of how you would go about making changes in the system to accommodate the requests that's being made?
Yes, I trust that the leadership in both collective bargaining units are familiar with those, the strategies to entertain potential items during the collective bargaining negotiation. And it would be at that time that we would entertain such a proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Chief, since you're there, I was going to call Mr. In and botch up first, but good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
You were police chief of Omaha at what time?
From 2003 to 2008.
Okay. And your predecessor, how long was your predecessor there before you were chief for five years?
Roughly five years.
Five years?
Uh, 1999-ish to 2003.
And if you can answer this, go ahead and do so. If you can't, Bernard, I'll ask him. If I heard Bernard correctly, in our meetings that we had and that he said today, that the drop was first proposed and agreed to in 2010 by the Omaha Police Department? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And in 2013, the Omaha Fire Department followed. When they did that, was that just for the chiefs in 2010 and 2013?
No.
That was for the rank and file?
That was for rank and file and management.
Okay. So was it, was it done at the same time for the chiefs, all the way down to the rank and file, in 2010 for the police and 2013 for fire?
I believe so.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. Question, couple of questions for Bernard.
Bernard Inambash, Deputy City Attorney. The, I want to correct one thing, and I, the chief just wasn't familiar with it, I don't believe. The Police Officers Association negotiated in 2010. It was negotiated for police management sometime thereafter, within the next year after that.
Okay.
For fire, it was negotiated in 2013. It was negotiated for fire management at a different time period. Not, not big, not big gaps, but they are separate bargaining groups. And honestly, the reality is that different bargaining groups have different items in their contracts, they actually make different pension contributions, and they actually all get, there's a variety of differences in the benefits that are received in our pension system. So I'll go ahead and, I know you had other questions.
No, thanks. And I wasn't trying to put Chief Moore on the spot, but I, thanks for just making, clearing that up, just so we're all on the same page. If my math is right, I believe there's 906 budgeted police officers, and I believe the number is 700 for the Omaha Fire Department, so if my fuzzy math is right, that's 1,606. Does that sound accurate?
Yeah, I don't know that it's quite 700, but that's approximate number of, of active budgeted positions.
Okay. And, and I'll say that I got tremendous respect for Chief Schmodder and Chief Bossman for the work they do. This, this isn't, when I, when I'm asking these questions, it's not anything against them, but when I was presented this, when we had a meeting on it a couple of weeks ago, I think Trevor hit the nail on the head, it's an issue of fairness. And when, when this first happened in 2010 and 2013, it wasn't for two people, it was for all the rank and file. And, and it was mentioned that this is for the retention of competent executives. Totally understand that. But at the same time, when we're short police officers, I have a hard time wrapping my, my fairness thoughts around if we're carving out a deal for the chiefs. And there's no, not even, I mean, maybe when you go down the road, I know it's just a public hearing today, but what would that look like, an amendment in respect to what's before us today in item 53? I don't know if that would be for the clerk or Ms. Orkuzi or Bernard, who can answer that?
I, I can answer it. I think, one, you've committed an unfair labor practice if you do that, because you're going to have now artificially changed the terms and conditions of employment for two bargaining groups that we haven't negotiated with. And I appreciate, the point is well taken. I appreciate Mr. Towey's position about fairness, and that, and that's reasonable. I would point out that different people in the police and fire pension system contribute different rates, different amounts. People get different benefits. The widow's benefit for police officers is lower than the widow's benefit for people in local, in local 385. So there are differences. We're not, let's, let's appreciate that our pension, not everybody who's in the pension system is receiving, putting the same money in or receiving the same benefits. And the drop period was put in in 2010 and 2013, not because there was any reason why it was important to delay it, it was because there were, we were in negotiations with those bargaining groups for a period of time, and that's when we could come to an agreement. And there's absolutely no question that we could, if this became something that the fire, the OPOA and/or local 385 was interested as making part of their collective bargain agreement, we could have that as part of negotiations. Everyone would have to decide on priorities, but that's, so that addresses part of your question. As far as amending it, it's not hard to amend an ordinance to make it apply to everybody. I think you have some legal and problems there. Now, again, maybe they won't stop, maybe no one will file that unfair labor practice because they don't want to. I think there's, I mean, but amending an ordinance itself is not super, super difficult, to be honest with you. Now, amending a collective bargain agreement, because we eventually have to do that, is going to take a little bit of time.
No, I understand that, and I, that's why I'm glad I got smart city attorneys, so council members don't try to do unfair labor practices, because that's not what I was doing. What I was doing was asking the question on the, the part of fairness. And, and to be clear, if I heard you correctly, Chief Bossman is not in the drop program, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And again, tremendous respect for Chief Bossman and Chief Schmodder as well. Is there a drop date for Chief Schmodder?
A drop-end date?
Yeah.
For Chief Schmodder, there is. I believe it's in March of 2026.
Okay, March 1st, 2026?
Yeah, it's in the first part of March.
So i- if we didn't do this, let's say, walk me through this. I- if we back up and take a little more time on this than is on our agenda for today and the third rating is on the fourth, it's not March 1st of 2025, the drop date?
Correct.
It's 26?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks, Bernard.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Huck?
Bernard?
Okay.
Nice try.
I'm happy to be, happy to answer questions.
So I have hired a few chief of police in my time, actually, and when I first got on the city council, that was my first mission, was to find out what we need to do to keep Chief Schmodder. And I asked the time, what do we need to do? And they said, oh, well, Chief Schmodder's in the drop. I said, well, what, can we fix that? And the answer was no. So I'm kind of curious what changed in the past 18 months? Well, because at the time, I was pretty insistent on my questions, well, there's got to be a way that we can undo this, and that, you know, everybody said, no, no, we can't undo, we can't do it, blah, 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 blah. Is it just that it wasn't my idea? Is, is that what it was, or?
So I, I think when you addressed the question, they were talking about different ways to do it. And the first question was not necessarily the drop, it was as an independent contractor, and I think that, and I don't want to discuss all our attorney-client privileged communications, but
That was part of the conversation.
But I think the other part of the, the issue was whether or not allowing it would be allowed within the context of the drop that we have, which has been approved by the Internal Revenue Service. We have explored that in the past year, and based on that exploration, feel comfortable coming forth with this proposal. And I think that's, what has changed, the discussion with the outside council and the Internal Revenue Service is what's changed.
You say comfortable as if there's a question in the back of your mind.
Well, I
You're not convincing me you're comfortable.
Well, the, the Internal Revenue Service in the past used to issue advisory opinions so that we would have confirmation that something was legal or not. They don't do that anymore. So we have to rely on the legal advice from our pension advisor, who looks at the Internal Revenue Code, who has vetted this and believes it's, it's, will pass muster. There is at least one other drop program that allows for a similar extension for a superintendent in a school district in the state of Florida. So there is at least one other instance where you have a limited ability to extend a, a drop program for, in that case, one particular person. So, yeah, that's, you know, we have to rely on that. I mean, in a perfect world, would I love to have an advisory opinion from the Internal Revenue Service, giving us 100% confidence? And if I had that, I would say 100% confidently. At this point, we're, it's an educated, legally educated guess, based on what we know and what's happened in other places.
So do you see, the, the, the other problem I have is that I see this as more of a financial decision, because ultimately it does affect the budget. And clearly, the purse strings are controlled by the city council. Am I getting off track?
When you say it affects the budget, obvious, I would say the only effect that you see in the budget is if, this wouldn't be adopted, Chief Schmodder, who's at the top of his pay scale, would retire, and presumably, we would hire somebody who's at the bottom of the pay scale, at least for, and for about two years, we might see, for two and a half, because I think there's a provision in their contract that gets them to the top step after three years. For a couple of years, we would see a, a slight decrease in the step that we would be paying a police chief. Now, keep in mind that a police chief at step G in 2024 and a, and a, or 2025, and a police step, a step A in 2026 and B in 2027, because we, we already have built-in rows, it's not as big a thing, but that would certainly, that could potentially be your cost-saving by not having the experienced chief in there, assuming nobody did a higher above the minimum, which, again, that's something that mayors can request and personnel boards can approve, there would be at least a saving at that particular rank.
So to get to my question, do you think this should be more of a city council decision? Or do you think it, the mayor has the authority to be able to extend this?
So when you're, I assume now what you're talking about is who makes the decision as to whether
The ultimate decision to extend.
As to whether or not to approve an extension of drop? Well, I mean, I, we have a strong mayor-form of government, the charter clearly lays that out. Obviously, the legis, the legislative branch, the city council, controls the purse strings, but the executive branch is the one responsible for the, the executive functions. The, the mayor is the supervisor for both the police chief and the fire chief on a daily basis. They're the one, the mayor's the one who appoints the police chief and fire chief. There isn't any, no review of those particular functions by, by this council. So I, I think in a strong mayor-form of government, where the city, the police chief and fire chief report directly to the mayor, it makes sense that the mayor be the one who makes the decision as to whether or not they want the person to continue to serve in the position. But again, I mean, obviously, that's my opinion, and you're perfectly able to disagree, but that's, that's why
Why would I ever disagree with you, Bernard?
No, a lot of people do. Including my wife, frequently.
Bernard, since you're there, I have a couple of questions for you there, too. So I was involved with you and also a committee on the council, which was Mayor Stoddard at the time, and Chris Jarum. In renegotiating these contracts in 2010 that you were talking about
Yep.
To avert what was a financial crisis at the time in the pension system. And so I remember those details pretty well also. And it was the intention of the drop program at that time to preserve experience, retain continuity, and prevent, you know, arbitrary retirements. So I think it's, this is consistent with what that objective was. There's no doubt, though, that at the time, that those were negotiated, part of the negotiated contracts. And so I think what you just said, that to apply that to OPOA and local 385 at this juncture would require it to be a negotiated item in the next contract negotiation, is that what?
It's a term and condition of employment that I think is subject to negotiation. Now, you can, I mean, that's, the, the question, when you give a gratuity, you give something to a union without asking anything in return, it's still an unfair labor practice, it's still potentially an unfair labor practice, but people may not choose to, to file that if they're getting something in return. But the reality is, the drop program was a term and condition of employment from the very beginning, and we haven't changed it much since its inception, and frankly, it was negotiated primarily for, with OPOA or their predecessor, what they, they called themselves before. And pretty much everybody else got what they negotiated, quite honestly. But it was still a negotiation, it didn't apply to firefighters until such time as they adopted their contract late in 2012, which I think became effective on January 2nd of 2013.
And so it's an interesting idea, I think, the notion of extending it to those bargaining units, given the fact we have staffing shortages, particularly on the police side, and what that might do to impact that in a positive way, depending upon the financial ramifications, of course. But I also believe these contracts believe that, or state that a drop program needs to be at least revenue-neutral to the city.
That was certainly, that was certainly the language that we drafted in the drop program. And when we looked at the drop program five years after its inception, it met that, and that's part of the analysis that I asked them to do on this particular change, to ensure that it remained revenue-neutral. And frankly, in 2015, and with this particular opinion, both, both the drop program itself and this particular change were actually, turned out to be drop beneficial.
Mm-hmm. It's actually positive compared to what would happen today. It is a very large payout, I will say, but the same is true as if it were to happen today.
And it may very well be positive if that's something that the OPOA and the local 385 want for their members, and we go through and negotiate that with them, including the triggering mechanism and some of those other things, we'd obviously look at that. It's obviously a much bigger group. And, and, you know, there may be some people that are in, most people may be in favor of it, there's probably going to be some people opposed. I mean, there's no question that when we implemented the drop program, it had an adverse impact on promotional opportunities for a period of time. And so there are certain people that, that were just not promotional opportunities because your person at a higher rank was in the drop, and so they weren't leaving. So those are obviously all things that get weighed in that negotiation process by the union as to whether weighed in that negotiation process by the union as to whether this is truly something
Yeah.
that they want. Plus, we obviously have a mandatory retirement age in our, in our code. And again, that may be something that's also addressed in those negotiations.
There could be that implication. And in the, in the current drop program, there's actually more firefighters than police, which I think is interesting to note, too.
Yeah, we've had, we've had a change. The first few years of drop, police participated at a very high percentage, and fire, not as high a percentage. Over the last four or five years, it's reversed.
And then the nuance here, though, is this is an ordinance. This does not, does not amend a contract, right?
Well, the fire, and fire management and police management don't have collective bargaining agreements. Their contracts are codified in Chapter 22 and 23 of the municipal code. So, to the extent that we negotiate anything with those groups, and they're recognized bargaining groups, they are, and pension benefits are in Chapter 22. So, I, I would argue that this particular change is part of the collective bargaining agreement that applies to police management and fire management.
Okay. I feel like that's a different response than maybe I got initially. Would those bargaining units have to vote on this, if this is approved?
Well, in, I don't know whether they did or they didn't. But theoretically, these are items that were, that, I mean, these are benefits, terms and conditions, benefits for that, those particular bargaining groups. So, I'll leave it at that.
So, is that a yes, they would have to vote on this, or you're not sure?
I would think they could either vote or vote by assent. I mean, obviously, those groups tend to be small. I don't know that they actually have formal votes, like you see with the bigger groups. And I don't know that they have extensive bylaws, like both the OPOA and Local 385, that have a very structured voting process. I think they generally do it by discussion and agreement, more than by, by a pronounced vote, like you, like we're typically used to seeing in the bigger bargaining groups, whether it be the public safety ones, or Local 285, or Semtech.
Okay. And then it's by way of process. So, that's a little, that was a little bit difficult answer to decipher there. But by process, typically, a bargaining unit has approved something before it comes to us.
Correct.
And it also has typically gone to the personnel board. My understanding is personnel board will consider this later this week?
They will later this week. And that's, and you're correct. We've had some instances where it's been placed on your agenda before it went to the personnel board. In those instances, I've typically asked that this council have the public hearing after the personnel board. We had some discussion about that. But obviously, they will be, this will be before the personnel board on Thursday, and then obviously, before you, again, on Friday. Obviously, we'll report what the personnel board does, because obviously, if they, depending on their recommendation, could have an effect on the number of votes needed by this council to adopt it.
I see. And then my last question for now, I think there's some other lights on still. Most, this is an ordinance. Most ordinances would go into effect two weeks after they're approved.
Correct.
This has a specific date by which it would start, March 1st. Is there a reason for that?
I put that in there kind of on purpose to, with a thought process that this might get laid over a week or two, and I wanted a date certain. Nothing, nothing more than that.
Okay.
Provide a specific date.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, is your light on?
Yes.
Yep.
So, Bernard, I kind of want to piggyback on what I believe Councilmember Hug was alluding to as it relates to the budget. If we are to approve this, would this not impact or make a change in the budget for 2025, 2026?
It would not make a change in 2025. In 2026, if this were not adopted, what would happen is Chief Schmader would retire in March of 2020, 26, and you would have to hire a new police chief. That new police chief presumably would start at some level of pay below the top step. Chief Schmader's been, is at the top step in our pay plan and has been for a number of years. Now, the reality is, the mayor could ask to hire above the minimum and end up having the new person make the exact same amount. That does not come to you. It would go to the personnel board, and the personnel board approved it, they would make that. But the likelihood is, if it wasn't approved, the new police chief would likely make a little bit less. Now, if you're in the drop, you don't receive longevity pay, you don't receive tuition reimbursement, you don't receive a couple other things. So, Todd Schmader is not receiving those things. If we had a new police chief who was hired in, after March of 2026, they would probably start receiving, they would get longevity pay, they would be eligible for tuition reimbursement, and that would eat up some of the difference. So, I can't say definitively that this would be, result in a, it, it will be some different amount of pay, because probably everything doesn't line up perfectly. But I can't tell you definitively that it won't cost more or less, depending on if you don't adopt this.
So, would you say it has the potential of increasing the budget?
It has the potential, you'd have the potential. Now, keep in mind, that if this wasn't adopted, when the mayor did her budgeting, whatever mayor did the budgeting, and when the council approved the budget in August, you would know this wasn't adopted. So, you would have to account for the fact that some of those other things would occur. If this was approved, and you were, you were aware that the police chief had been allowed to extend it, you would presumably have a budget in front of you that would show that amount, the amount that that person would be paid. The, the money in the pension system, which is the accrued payments that would have been made, don't go, come before this council, never have come before this council, and would have no effect. So, whether the person in drop gets this amount, or this smaller, larger amount, at the end of their drop period, is not an issue that, it doesn't come from general fund money.
But it would impact the budget, because we did not account for, we did not account for this approval. Otherwise, why would we be voting on this to approve it?
Well, by the time you are budgeting, you're going to know what happened with this ordinance. And presumably, whoever does the budgeting, whatever mayor is the mayor, whatever council is, council next summer, would budget accordingly. If the budget, if the, if this was adopted, and we became aware that Chief Schmader had asked for, and the mayor had approved an extension of the drop, then obviously, that budgeted number would come to you for consideration. If it wasn't approved, and Chief Schmader's drop ended next March, then you would have, you would have a budget put together with presuming a new police chief. So, I don't think it affects your budgeting, because you're going to know the answer to the question before you do your budgeting.
But you did answer my question. So, this management change regarding the drop program, when did that take place?
Well, the item, obviously, it has, it won't take place until...
No, the original agreement with the management change to have the drop program.
Drop program. I believe police management was sometime in the summer of 2011.
Okay.
And I believe, and I don't, but I'm not, I don't know definitively, I haven't, I don't have the dates of every collective bargaining agreement between the city and its bargaining groups memorized. It wasn't, and I was not something that I prepared for. But I know police management was after police sworn.
Okay.
And I'm pretty confident that fire managements agreed to it sometime in 2012, prior to the time that the, the Local 385 did. And I remember that because of, I was peripherally involved.
So, let's do some hypotheticals here. Let's assume that your numbers are right, 2011, 2012, for the management. And Rank and File had to have negotiations, right?
The police negotiations were what established the drop. It was adopted by the city council in September of 2010. That, the drop that we see today, without, with a couple of minor tweaks, is that same drop that was adopted by, as a result of police negotiations in September of 2010.
Okay. So, where I'm heading here is that the Rank and File, when they had opportunities to do negotiation, to perhaps bring their concern regarding unequal opportunity, when might that have had, when might that have occurred?
Obviously, anybody can, the collective bargain agreements and the ordinances that come to the city council that adopt those are public, and obviously, a public record. As regard to, because there weren't any substantive changes between the time of adoption to now, I don't know that there's really a time I can say that they would have had, I mean, this, the concept that you have before you today was not, no one, I, I'm not aware that anybody talked about it, asked about it, inquired about it, up until in the last about 18 months. That's the...
So, so during negotiation, past negotiations, is it possible that Rank and File had the concern that has been shared today by Trevor regarding the unfairness? Is it possible that that discussion took place in those negotiations? And if so, what was the outcome of those negotiations? What happened in that, in that, in that, when that conversation took place?
Because it was not anything that anybody thought of, or nor anybody inquired, I don't think it's fair to say that they had an opportunity to discuss it. There, there was no opportunity to discuss this until this item would, would have been placed on the agenda for the city council. Does that mean people could have brought it up? Sure. The situation that Mr. Towey expressed, where that employee got into the drop, and after a year or two, expressed concern that, hey, maybe I won't be ready to retire, I have no doubt that has occurred at times over the, there's also others who commit to the three to five years, and say, after two years, I'm ready to be out, I'm done. And they're allowed to leave. But, but, but I think Mr. Towey's response to the questions about that, or his testimony, was, yeah, everybody would have said, that's what you entered in for, it's irrevocable, and you're committed for that three or five-year period that you did so. And I don't think there's really, I don't think it'd be fair for me to say there was a time for anybody to discuss this particular proposal before it just came forward.
So, because I'm trying to establish a timeline in which Rank and File could have negotiated something that would equal to what is being extended to the management side of the house?
Fair enough. There is no question that in any, every negotiation that has occurred since the adoption of this particular drop, or even at the time it was adopted, there could have been discussion. Somebody could have asked about the possibility of doing it. I don't recall that ever occurring. I am not at the negotiation table, but I am pretty involved in the negotiation process, and I'm usually made aware. And I would have been surprised if anybody would have brought it up. So, I'm not aware it was ever brought up by anybody, though they certainly could have brought it up, anytime since 2010 or 2013, depending on the bargaining group.
And so would Mr. Trevor, would, would you have the answer to that question?
Yes.
Could you please come up and share what happened at the negotiation table?
Trevor Towey, Omaha, professional firefighters. If I understand your question right, you're asking if we ever discussed this provision, or a similar provision, that would affect the members that I represent during negotiations?
Correct.
And the answer is no.
Okay.
We did not consider that.
So, now we are probably through all of this back and forth, we understand that we could possibly have that conversation at the next negotiation?
Yes, that could happen at the next negotiation. And it would be my position that if, if this is something that the city is willing to do for a small group, that they should also offer that to my group. And furthermore, it would be the decision of my members to accept that or not to accept that. I, I don't get to make all the decisions, that's not my role. But I do represent the positions of my members. And if and when that was a subject of negotiations, that's what I would do.
And when is your next contract due?
Not till the end of '27.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bagley.
Thanks. Mr. Anabash, a quick follow-up question. Council President Fesserson asks excellent questions regarding, if you drill down, you mentioned the committing of unfair labor practices. My question is this. The chief's bargaining group, if they don't have a chance to weigh in on this, do they have to vote on it? If they don't have a chance to weigh in, is that an unfair labor practice? I guess I'll try to drill down on what, I, I don't want to get an answer, I'm trying to understand that.
Well, we can't, we, the city, cannot control how any particular labor, labor group acts. So, I, I can't tell, if they went through, they have a process, and the process wasn't followed, I don't think that's necessarily an unfair labor practice. Like giving somebody a benefit without negotiation could potentially be an unfair labor practice. Now, keep in mind, you have, you have, you have changed pay, pay plans for individual positions, right? You get those periodically. Those are terms and conditions of employment for people in the bargaining group. What we have usually, we've done in those instances is we check with the group and say, look, we're doing this, any objection? No objection, they come forward. Now, theoretically, you could say we shouldn't do any of that until afterwards. So, but as far as how they mechanically operate, I, I know OPOA has bylaws, I think that Local 385 has bylaws that say, this is how you have to do it. And if they didn't, it doesn't get approved the right way, then there's an internal process to address it. But we, we don't control what they do internally.
Okay. So, the chiefs, the deputy chiefs, their bargaining unit?
Yes.
If we pass this for the two, for the police chief and fire chief, do the deputy chiefs have the ability to say this is an unfair labor practice?
You're, you're asking me to assume something I don't know the answer to. I don't know the answer to the question about whether or not those groups are in favor or not in favor of this particular ordinance. If somebody's, there wasn't any collective decision made, or whatever else, there is certainly then the chance that somebody could bring in unfair labor practice.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I don't think I see any further lights at this time. Thanks for your testimony. Madam Clerk?
Non-action items, items 54 through 83, do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:47.